Welcome to the March 7, 2023 Town of Southern Shores Regular Town Council Meeting. Please stand now and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is famous, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please join me now in a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, we have a, an agenda, so I would like to ask if there are any amendments to the agenda, and if not, for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have an agenda. Thank you. Consent agenda, there are four items, including minutes, proposed budget for the government education access channel, surplus resolution, and a resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to revise and expand the Good Samaritan law as described. Any discussion or concern with the consent agenda, counsel?
I have none.
Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have a presentation from our Marine Corps League, so I would like to welcome our Marine Corps representatives up to the podium, I think, to say can speak to us for a few minutes. Welcome, gentlemen. We're very, very pleased to have you here tonight. If you could come over here, we have a nice microphone set up for you.
You want to speak in here?
Yes, sir.
For many years, the Marine Corps League has been grateful for the town letting us use the facility here for our monthly meetings, and we have thought that it would be a good time to say thank you to that, and also to recognize the town for its loyalty and patriotism, for doing a very good job in flying our flag, our United States flag and the state flag and Southern Shores flag. So we are very, very pleased with that. So on behalf of our Commandant, Mike Warnbee, and the entire Marine Corps League of the Outer Banks, I'd like to present Madam Mayor and the Town Council a certificate that you can hang proudly, hopefully in a real public place.
Wonderful.
We're recruiting, can you tell? Take picture, Mayor.
Get a good picture.
Picture up.
Sephora five.
Sephora five.
Can I say Googee?
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
And thank you guys for your, thank you guys for your service.
As a mother of a Marine, I say thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Counsel, next on our agenda is staff reports. We're going to start out with Cliff.
Actually, if Wes-
Oh, we're going to reverse things around?
Wes, if he could double up next month.
Absolutely. So we'll go to our Police Chief, Chief Cole. Good evening, sir. Good to see you.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. The February 2023 Police Department budget, yeah, budget.
I had to turn that into a, that's why it took my mind.
Now we'll, now we'll give you a report on the monthly report for February. As you can see, down by the pie chart, we had 1,451 calls for service. That was 57 more than we had last February. Under the incidents, which are the actual crimes that were reported, you can see we had 28, and there's a breakdown of those. Then, under the criminal arrests, we had 10 of those, and you can see the breakdowns for those. There were a total 23 offenses related to those 10 arrests. Let's see, officers actually conducted 51 traffic stops, and out of those traffic stops, they issued 11 written citations and another 38 warning citations. We had no ordinance violations for February, and we had two motor vehicle accidents for the month of February. Questions?
Where were the accident, the two vehicle accidents? Where were they?
I believe, I'd have to check on that, because I'd be lying to you if I told you.
Well, just what?
I can guarantee you they were on Southern Shores, but other than that-
I was just wondering if they were on 12.
Unless you remember. Yeah. I'll find out, I'll worry. I'll send you an email.
The only reason I'm asking is when I'm walking in the morning, there is some potential ones about to happen.
Oh, yeah.
I can't believe the speed and they're passing each other, it's like a drag race up through there.
Yeah.
And the, and the speed limit's 35.
I know. Crazy.
We didn't, we didn't gain nothing, I don't think. But anyhow.
The only other, other thing I wanted to ask, as most of you know, regarding our K-9 unit, I wanted to know if any of you have any questions or concerns that I can answer. I would be more than happy to.
It sounds like that's one of the, when the trainer switches, can you kind of go through what that kind of is challenging?
It's, it's not. Matter of fact, what I can tell you is that we contacted four, almost four, almost a half a dozen K-9 facilities, several trainers that were handlers. And what I can tell you is that, that one of, one of the K-9 trainers that we talked to have retrained four handlers for the same dog. In my experience from back home, we had two, two K-9s. What we did is, based on all of the K-9 people that we spoke with, all K-9s are pretty high-driven. Our dog was exceptionally high-driven, just wanted to work all the time, which is a good thing. But unfortunately, when I put it out to the officers, the officer that really, really has the interest and the heart for it is going to be going out on maternity leave. And the problem you have with a, with a high-driven dog, any kind of a police dog like that, is that they need to be worked, and they need to be worked a lot. Now, we found some kennels that specifically will work the dog, but costly, over $1,000 a month, just to kennel the dog and hope that they, they can keep it worked. But then, at the end of that five months, that, that would be over $5,000. And then, at the end of the five months, then we still have to, the dog is already trained, but we have to take the new handler, and they have to be trained to know how to read the dog, so on and so forth. And by the time you added all of that up, we actually found, and we get, we would get our own choice of what type of dog, so we may be looking at a lab possibly. But it would be a lot cheaper to just buy a new dog and have the officer trained than it would be to do, to do Echo. It was, what, 20? Echo, and then if, if we went back to the same place that, that we had gotten a dog, yeah, so financially, it just made no sense at all. And we were assured that, you know, the dog would be more than capable of being, you know, with another handler. So, some things went on, and what we finally ended up doing, because I didn't want to give the dog back, we ended up making a deal with your blessings and with the town manager's blessings with the Dare County Sheriff's Office. They have a handler, they have three people that are interested in being that dog's handler. So that's where we're kind of at. We didn't want to put the dog in a kennel for five months and then hope that it hadn't lost its drive and that type of thing. So that's kind of where we're at right now with that. Hate to lose either of them, you know, Zach is in my prayers, I hope that he finds what he needs to find. We had an excellent dog, and he's done quite a bit for us in the short time that he was here. Just, it'll be a year this month, sort of, somewhere around there. For the last seven or eight months, I mean, I can give you all the numbers and that, but it was over 30, for seven months, it was over 30 hits that the dog had been requested for, not just us, but other surrounding, surrounding agencies, and pretty close to half of those resulted in some type of arrest for drugs. So, the dog is, is a big hit with the, with the community, it's, it's a great asset and a great tool. It's kind of like having an officer that you spend a lot of money on, and you send him to be an investigator, you know, and you buy all the fancy equipment, everything for him to do crime scenes and stuff, and then eventually he leaves. I have no control over that, but that doesn't mean that we just stop. You know, we still have over $12,000 worth of really good equipment, including a police vehicle, and if you know anything about dogs, once it's a dog car, it's always a dog car. So, our hopes are, I've applied for a grant, the gentleman emailed me on Friday night at home, said everything, we met all the criteria, and that he forwarded it to the United States Police K-9 Association, and he told me that they forwarded it to the review panel, and we should hear something within four to six weeks. So, we'll see what happens with that.
So, so are you asking counsel to, to approve a request tonight, or did you?
No, I'm just, I'm just hoping that you, that you will not give up on our K-9 unit. I'm hoping that you'll support it and continue to support it. That's all.
I certainly think that it's, I always think about it from the dog's perspective, because I'm a dog person, and I hate, although I hate terribly that we lost a wonderful officer in Zach, but for his, for the dog's best interests, I believe, working is what, what the dog needs. So going to Dare County just makes the most sense.
That's right. And we felt that, that there's a good possibility our officers will be working for the dog, too, you know. The problem is, is that it was a big benefit to us in Kill Devil Hills, and Kitty Hawk, and Duck, because most of the dogs are south. So that was, that was, that's the one thing that we're going to lose for a little while anyway.
Chief, can you tell us a little bit about the two K-9 incidents that you had in February?
Yep, let me check.
I just wondered what sorts of incidents those were.
We had, let's see. We had two, yeah, two in, in February. Two of them actually on the same day, they were on the 27th, and I had those circled in red, so those were a hit and an arrest for drugs, traffic stops.
Any other questions for Chief Cole?
How many open officer positions do we have at the moment?
As of Thursday, we'll have four. Zach will be done. We have one new one that will be starting by April 1st, hopefully sooner, from Charlotte Mecklenburg.
Will that take us to three?
So it'll put us at three again. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Was our, our dog wasn't used up at the school last week, was he?
Was.
That was ours. Okay.
Sheriff's Department was there. They went-
Because the press said it was KDH's dog.
Yeah, well, that was a multi-agent, and the reason they do that is good training for all the dogs, so anybody that is available, they'll ask them to come. But I can tell you that I got a call from, from the undersheriff, the chief, and he says, that's a hell of a dog.
That's a good dog.
Yeah. They watched it work, so. And they said the same thing, the dog is just, just wants to work, so.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief Limbacher, good evening. Good to see you.
Evening, Mayor, counsel. Brief, brief report for you tonight. For the month of February, Fire Department responded to only 25 calls, which is only eight behind last year, but it certainly seems pretty slow this time of year, but kind of normal for us, but on the slow side. Only one building fire was in Kitty Hawk, it was a aisle building was fully involved on the golf course, 20 EMS calls, one service call, which is an address sound, and then two alarms. Pretty simple this month. Anybody have any questions? I'm not unhappy about that, I'm just saying, I'm waiting for the other shoe to drop, so I'm just- I did have just an update on E Station, I'm sure most of you probably know it through Cliff, but we do have the final ground lease that's been signed, and Bobby has it, hopefully he'll have it back to me Monday before they start demolition. I have all the confidence in the world that he will. They're going to begin demolition on the 13th, which is next Monday, for those of you who don't know that. All our stuff's been removed, the police truck's now out of there, it's at the back of the firehouse on Dogwood, and that's probably what will remain until the station's up, as far as I know. Training, being there training Thursday night, big training in there, cutting the roof, doors, all that kind of stuff that we don't really get to do normally. We were lucky enough that the people at the marketplace let us train on that before they ripped it down, which is really, really nice of them, actually. So we're going to do the same thing at the E Station, and that'll be Thursday, it'll be a big one, and then they're going to be in there Saturday and Sunday. And I know the deputy chief has had some of our interns in there doing some ceilings and things like that, that they don't really get a chance to do normally, so. Beginning calls, that's, it's just us playing.
Nice to be able to have those training opportunities, so that's really, really nice.
Yep, you can't, you just can't play with that unless you have that actual ability to actually do it, cutting, so it's pretty nice.
That's great. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Thank you for all you do. Cliff, you're up. Good evening.
Evening. Only thing I wanted to add, what Chief Limbacher said was, and I think we've mentioned this before, is that EMS will still have a presence in Southern Shores. While the demolition work is going on, they'll be located on an office building behind Town Bank on, on Juniper. They'll be there temporarily, but I just want to make sure folks knew that they're still here.
Where, where they going to park their vehicles?
Parking in the back.
In the back.
That was a bad joke, but staff will park in the front, EMS will park in the back.
Okay. Yeah, because they've been working on that building.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And then, of course, beach nourishment. The latest as of today is possibly start mobilization, March 20th. I asked how sure the project manager was, and he was 90% sure that that was the date. As you know, the, the mobilization period is for one week, demobilization is for one week. That'll all take place at the Hillcrest Beach Access. They, there's, the project's scheduled to be 45 days. If they start the mobilization on the 20th, they should be done in Southern Shores by May 15th. Contract reads that they have to be complete with everything by June 15th. Hillcrest is no longer available for them on June 15th, so if they hadn't demoed, they're kind of stuck. But hopefully, that 90% holds true, and we'll start to see the project soon. The sand fence, I believe, they're about, still about a mile short of the sand fence. All that sand fence you see at Chickahawke is not going on the beach. Some, about 1,000 sections will be left at Chickahawke, or is not going on the beach, and we'll have to, you know, the, the CPE or Weeks, where someone will have to take that out of Chickahawke. And we've tried to give, we've given them a soft deadline of middle of May to get that, to get that out of that area. Beach grass is still going strong. I believe we've planted 113 boxes, all told. Yeah. So, yeah, and again, we have to thank Better Beaches and thank the public work staff. They've also put in a lot of time trying to save the town a lot of money by, by doing this work with staff and volunteers. And that's all I got.
Well, I just think that, that the volunteers that we've had to plant the grasses, led by our, our very own Lynn, have just been fabulous and a great job. You know, we had families, we have Matt Neal and his kids out there getting it done, and so just can't thank you all enough. This community is just awesome. Yes, please, Lynn, yes. Yeah, give them, give us an update. Thank you.
We have, let's see, we've, with the, with Better Beaches and the Town of Southern Shores, the Civic Association has really come through. They, last weekend, we had 41 people come out to help plant grass. It was amazing. So, so far, we've planted 50 cases of grass, that's 80,000 springs. And we've covered, as of last weekend, we've done over a mile, and I think the town has done over a mile. And I think they're almost up to Chickahawke, so. So, they've only got a little bit more between Chickahawke and the cell phone tower to go, and then we'll have from the pier all the way up to Hickory. And then, in the fall, in November, we can start again doing Seacrest Village from 1st to 13th Avenue. Let's see, just want to make an announcement. So tomorrow, we're planting again at 228 Ocean Boulevard at 10:30 a.m., if you want to come out. Sunday, the 12th, at 12:30, we're planting at Sandpiper, which is between Mockingbird and the other street there. And then, our last day of planting, because the, it's getting too warm to plant, we can only plant up to a certain date, and our last shipment will be next week. And so Friday, St. Patrick's Day, the 17th, we're going to be planting at Hickory, and that should be the end. And then afterwards, we're going to have a St. Patrick's Day pizza party at the Southern Shores Marina Pavilion. The sand fence is behind schedule, but they're still doing, they're up to 4th Avenue already, so they should be finished pretty soon. And that's about it. I just want to ask our police chief if we have parking, people parking along Ocean Boulevard Wednesday, Sunday, and Friday, not to give them tickets. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Appreciate the update. Great, great work.
Yeah, I just want to add, I'm, I'm just amazed at what you all have done, along with the public workspeople in Southern Shores. It's, we've paid for a lot of sand, sea oats and the likes in the past years, but this is a phenomenal job. Very, very well done.
Okay, so next is our town attorney, Johnny. I didn't even say hello to you yet, so hello, and good evening and welcome. Yes.
Thank you very much. I have nothing new to report. I'm sure you're all aware of the decision that was made by the Fourth Circuit with respect to the Mid-Currituck Bridge. I think John Lottie with her offices sent all of you a memo on that. Full disclosure, I have not read that, and I'm not as in the loop, but I wanted to make sure that you all received that, and if you guys have any questions about that, we'll of course be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Johnny.
And I guess the only real two options left for the plaintiff in that case are to either appeal it to the Supreme Court, or have a hearing in bank in front of the entire Fourth Circuit, and we just don't think either of those are likely. So that's kind of where the case sits right now.
Very good. Thanks. That's great news. Any questions for Johnny?
No.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Next on our agenda is general public comment. No one signed up? Anybody else want to speak? Ginny? No? Okay. No, old business. So we're on to new business. Item number six, counsel, on page nine of our books regarding audit services, and I think our very own Bonnie is going to talk to us. Bonnie, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I come to you this evening. We did send out our F P for audit services, and I'm happy to report, after being told, not to be surprised if we didn't get any, I was really nervous. We got six. So, and Teresa and I sat down and went through the six proposals, and what we were looking for was their approach to the audit quality, the experience they had, the unique qualifications, and the scope and pricing of the engagement. And what was most important to me, as a matter of fact, I had one of these firms call me today because they, I guess, looked at our packet and, you know, saw who we were going with, and asked what they could do differently. And I said, what is very, very important to us is that we have the one-on-one face-to-face. I have been with the town for 19 years this year, we've never had a late audit, and I don't want to start now. So I think part of that is due to the fact that we have always had our auditor come in, do face-to-face, because what a lot of them do, you have to pass stuff through portals and that sort of thing. And when I explained to them, I said, I'm a one-man show, I don't have time to be sending stuff through portals, so it's easier for me to get all the stuff together. I put it on the table, the auditor comes, she's here for a week, and, you know, and so I reached out to the one that, that we're recommending here, Car Riggs and Ingram CPAs there in New Bern. They also have firms in other states, too, I believe. She also does Currituck County's audit, and, and I confirmed that she will be here in person, she will do the audits, and they will be submitted on time, and she confirmed that for me. So that's who I'm recommending, and we will need a single audit done this year. The single audit is, anytime you get state or federal grants exceeding $750,000, it's a requirement that the LGC requires us to do. So that is an additional 2,500, but that's pretty standard across the board. So my recommendation is to go with Car Riggs and Ingram, that is for a three-year contract, so it's fiscal year 23, 24, and 25. So 23's price will be 24,000 because of the extra 2,500 for the additional single audit, 22.6 for 24, and 23.8 for 25. And keep in mind that this does not include the cost of having, Teresa is going to still write our financials. They recommend that you have a different firm do that than does the audit. So whenever we come to you with budget numbers under contracted services in the administration department, we'll have the cost of her to do that on a consulting-type- department, we'll have the cost of her to do that on a consulting-type basis for the town. Any questions?
We don't, we don't know what her fee will be?
Not yet. I told her that I, you know, that I need her to give that to me for the audit, I mean, for the budget.
Oh, okay.
What was the range of prices on the six?
They were all from about 21 up to 35.
Really?
Yes, sir.
So you're about the middle of the road.
So when we get our, our audit brought to counsel, who is it that will be presenting to us? Teresa or the new firm?
The new firm.
Okay.
Because one, Teresa bought us our audit, someone else had written those financial statements.
Gotcha, okay. So she was actually reporting on the other.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, gotcha, yes.
The shift that rolls.
Right.
I'm pretty sure that's, I mean, I've never done it like, I mean, we've always had, you know, Teresa has done it for several years, and, and within the last three years is when the LGC required us to separate the auditor and the financial statements, and someone else has written them, but Teresa still presents it, so I'm assuming that that's still the case.
Any other questions for Bonnie?
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Bonnie. So counsel, we're requested by staff to have a motion to award a three-year contract. Are you ready to make a motion, or do you need further discussion?
Oh, I'm fine.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to award a three-year contract for audit services to Carr Riggs and Ingram CPAs for the prices that they've described, that Bonnie just read out to us, and additional, for this fiscal year, an additional amount will be required for a single audit. So there's the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, staff. Next on our agenda is discussion consideration of contributions to the Wall of Healing and Kitty Hawk Elementary School Everyone's Playground. Cliff, are you handling this one?
At your, I think your last meeting, you heard presentation on the healing wall, and it may have been the one before that, that the Kitty Hawk Elementary School Playground Initiative was shared with you, and so we brought these two items back to put on your agenda to, just simply to see if you wanted to make a financial contribution to either one of these efforts.
Very good. So Leo, I think you had said you had known what KDH was doing?
Yeah, KDH is donating $5,000, the county's doing five, and at the time, I had the discussion at the last meeting, I mentioned 3,000, but I think we need to raise that to 5,000 to match what the other communities are doing, plus the fact that we have a large number of veterans here, and a number of them are Vietnam veterans.
Okay, so you're proposing a 5,000?
$5,000.
Any thoughts, council members, on 5,000 for a donation to the healing wall?
Where does the money come from?
Comes from?
Huh? General fund.
Fund balance?
No, I think we can take it out of our interest income.
Interest income.
Budget amendment.
Budget amendment, okay. Do you need that tonight?
We can, you can approve it tonight, and we can, and you can sign it later, just go ahead and take care of it, and the motion would be to approve a budget amendment for those amounts from.
Okay. I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead.
I was just kidding, I didn't, I was anticipating happening next fiscal year, I don't have a problem with it being this fiscal year.
Okay. All right. Well, it seems reasonable to do the elementary school at the same amount, 5,000?
Yeah. Matt, yeah.
Is that, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll take anything they can get.
Yeah. So we would need a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of 5,000 for the healing wall, 5,000 for Kitty Hawk Elementary School Everyone's Playground. That, so I'll make the motion to be, to be, and interest income will be the source of the funds, sorry. So that's a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
We had a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, very good. Next, we want to talk about the Juniper Trinity Bridge replacement. It'll be on page 11 in your books, council.
This is almost becoming a staple-like beach nourishment, but, so what you have in front of you is what we've talked about, is obviously Kemble Horn designed, permitting and designing the cord slab bridge is the replacement for the covert on Trinity Trail. I asked you last meeting if we could kind of hit the brakes and try and get this bridge height lowered some for aesthetics and cost. Not knowing how long that process is going to take, the, the, these, this entirety of getting this thing permitted and designed could take up to a year. And so with each month that goes by with Coast Guard review, it's a month and a year, it's a month, I mean, excuse me, a year and a month, a year and two months, so we thought we could go ahead and get started. These items that are in front of you don't hinge on whether or not the Coast Guard exempts it, or if they do, so we're asking to go ahead and get started with the project and with the tasks. Five tasks, environmental, geotechnical engineering services, topographic survey, the Sioux investigation, which is subsurface engineering, and document review and coordination. The total of those tasks combined is 176,780 dollars. The budget amendment request would be for 185 to cover any incidentals that may arise, but we just think it's, it's wise not to delay, I mean, I think the town's pretty committed to this project, committed to seeing it move forward, and these items are going to have to get done regardless of that decision. If we got a decision tomorrow from the Coast Guard, it's still going to take about a year to get all this done, but like, you know, like I said, the longer we wait, we're just adding time, so we would ask you all to consider authorizing my signature on these documents to execute the contract.
You mentioned once before that we were going to contact citywide, everybody on the east side of the corridor.
Yeah, but the.
Is that still the plan?
I've been waiting to find out, if Coast Guard says, no, you got to leave it where it is, then, then, you know, there's no need to do that. But if we are able to lower it, then, we do have a list of those addresses, and we could send that mailing out to let people know that that's what we're considering, so they can have input on that. Because I'd like to come back to you and say, okay, we've mailed the 40 residents, you know, and we've gotten the blessing, or, you know, they're okay with it, it's not going to impact the, their boat or their ability to get out.
I don't think anybody over there has a super liner, you know.
Not on the canal, anyway.
You never know what, I mean, till you find out what's, till you. All the plans could be, hey, I can't get my boat out now, so let's just be sure of it.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if we get that far and the Coast Guard says, okay, that's, stick wheels to them.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Within this scope of work for Kemble Horn, they'll give you periodic products, updates, completion, completed portions, that's the plan?
That's right. There's, there's triggers in here for reports to be generated, and one of the first thing I would want to do is set up that timeline, so we can keep a Gantt chart sort of to make sure they are staying on track. And be able to report to you all progress.
Is this something that eventually we can have on the town website, so that citizens can see what the progress is as we move through this project?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Cliff, concerning the?
This will take about a year, this first task.
This part, I think the whole thing will take a year. This could take six months, but once we get the answer to that question, I think.
Then we go to task two.
Kind of falls in, yeah. So I mean, we're still on a year course, I think, total.
Did we already appropriate some money for this?
Yes, sir.
This is all, okay.
This would all have to come from fund balance.
Yeah, capital reserves. And then, so we think if we complete this, get some answers from the Coast Guard, then go into actual engineering documents.
Correct.
Let's see, they're going to go 100, two borings of 100 feet. What do you hit around here at 50 feet?
Well.
I'm just, I'm just giving you a hard, I'm not giving you a hard time, but holy cow, 100 feet, you can sink a well. Not here, though.
You can.
What do you, what do you get at 100 feet?
You get water around.
Water, a lot of water pressure.
Nevermind, that's where the, that's where the bridge bends are going to go.
You want a deep well, not a shallow.
Early one. Need a motion?
We, yes, so requested action is on page 12.
I'm not there yet, but I would make a motion to authorize town manager to enter into a contract with Kemble Horn for task one, as stated in the contract.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion, counsel?
Nope.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very good, thank you, Cliff.
That, that bridge just keeps failing, right?
Oh, yeah.
But it's not going to collapse between now and years from now, right?
That's the plan.
That's your job.
Let's hope not.
You better not, huh?
Don't jinx it, Mark. Just, the tube, the tube itself is pretty good.
The tube is, yeah.
It's what's grounded.
Collapsing all around it.
I should have asked you to include this in your motion, but just so we have it in the minutes, can we get a motion to authorize the budget amendment?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we authorize a budget amendment in the amount of not to exceed 185,000. Second.
General fund.
From the general fund.
Designated fund.
Fund balance. Not to exceed 185,000. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you, words matter. Anybody from the public want to speak? No. Counsel business, I know we're going to have a meeting on March the 21st at 9 a.m. Agenda to be finalized later, that's my announcement. I've already thanked the grass planting crew, that was the other thing I was going to say, y'all are just awesome. Mark, do you have anything for us tonight?
You guys, appreciate you, it was in the consent agenda approving the GEACC budget for the year that's required, and they've got a new videography over there, there's a lot of good things coming out of there, full on behalf of the county, you know, and citizens here, so appreciate the support. Every town has to, has to approve, every entity has to approve their budget. So there's eight, eight different entities that support that in the county.
Very good. Leo?
An update on tourism board activities, occupancy collections, the month of December, we were off 40, almost 44%, which is getting down to about where we were in 2019. Current year-to-date, we're still up 5.6%. Meals, collections, they're off for December, we're off 5% and current year dates 5.81%. Our next board meeting is, has been moved from the 16th to the 23rd. And just a little bit of update on the sound side event site schedule, that's pretty well booked for the whole summer, all the way into November, believe it or not, and our first one, one of the first ones is the, mark your calendar on this one, it's Bike Week. That's April 26 through April 29. And, and believe it or not, there's a second one in the fall, I didn't realize there was a second one. And the other one that you might want to, other two, is of course, the Outer Banks Seafood Fest is October 21st, and then the Wall That Heals comes here on Wednesday, November 15th through Sunday the 19th, actually comes on Tuesday. So, but there's a plenty of activities in between, so the event site's getting some use now. And the other thing we just got to remember is we spring ahead Saturday night.
Oh, yeah.
We lose, we lose that hour. That's all I got.
Thanks, Leo. Matt?
Not much, I'll thank Len for everything he's doing, very inclusive, it's been a lot of fun for the kids to go out there. It's a good group. I dare you do.
Very good, thanks, Matt. Paula?
Well, again, kudos to these sea oats planting people, it's a phenomenal, phenomenal job, and I think adds a lot to the ambiance of the community. I do want to say something about the Mid-Currituck Bridge decision, and I want to thank everybody who supported filing that amicus brief, that Southern Shores took the leadership in filing. We were joined by a number of other towns, counties, groups. I just want to comment, we filed our brief in June, the oral arguments were heard in December, and there was a decision in February, and in my experience, that's basically warp speed in court time. So I just want to say, I think our amicus brief gave that a little push to show the courts that local people here want that bridge built. So I just want to thank everybody that supported that, and let's keep our fingers crossed, I, I think it's, I think it's a go.
Very good, thanks, Paul, appreciate all your efforts on behalf of that brief and our community filing it in time. Okay, next on our agenda is a closed session, so I'll need a motion, please, counsel.
I move to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318. Dot 11, paragraph A5, and North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, paragraph A3.
We have a motion, can I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, we're in closed session. Thank you, everyone.